Welcome to the Infrastructure Planning and Assets Committee agenda for the 22nd of April. Apologies for my tardiness this morning. We'll commence with the acknowledgement of country. Ipswich City Council respectfully acknowledges the traditional owners as custodians of the lands, winds and waters we all share. We pay our respects to their elders, past, present and emerging as the keepers of the traditions, customs, cultures and stories of a proud people. Is there any declarations of interest? First of all, are there any apologies this morning? We're all in attendance. As per the committee membership and we also have in attendance Observing Councillor Augustine. I can't see any other councillors, thank you. Are there any declarations of interest? There doesn't appear to be any around the table. I'll move to business outstanding. There are two matters on there. I understand the first matter being for capital investment in provisional projects policy, proposed amendments. That's currently laid on the table. I understand that a report is being prepared for a future meeting on that. Are there any questions? Is there any desire to lift it from the table, remain on the table? Don't need to motion for that, it just remains, does it not? Thank you. There being no objection, it will remain on the table for a future meeting. The next matter is questions regarding speed awareness sign and upgrade to Redbank Plains Road intersection. Is there, is there any questions in relation to that? Is there any, anyone wish to speak to that?
I just have a query in relation to the second question that I asked on the 18th of March, when that's likely to be answered.
Do we have the relevant chairperson here? Ms Mackenzie? There was a question from councillor Tully, if you are able to answer. The question was, if you could repeat again please councillor Tully?
Just, there were two questions, one's been answered and that's on page four of the agenda. I've just got the query about when, question two about the corner of Redbank Plains Road and Kruger Parade, roundabouts likely to be answered.
Thank you, through the chair. We do have an answer for that, we will send it out this week councillor Tully, if that's okay. We were just waiting and working with Urban Utilities on some timing to understand and give you a better idea of that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Item one is a response to a notice of motion regarding welcome to suburb town signs. Are there any questions, any discussion in relation to that matter?
I don't know if it's appropriate time, Chair, but I just wanted to give notice that I intend to add an item to the motions. So it'll be, I'll be adding item C to the recommended motions.
Okay, did, did you have any, did you wish to raise that now? Well, there is, if there's no questions of the officer, and I believe we do have Mr Pole here, who is able to answer questions if there are any. No questions? All right, so the report relates to a matter that came up a few meetings ago relating to the suburb signs. And the report recommends that we receive a note, the report, responding to the notice of motion concerning those signs. And that councils confirm option A, or set A as it's called, as presented in the report to be used for all suburban town sign replacements. Do I have a mover in relation to that? Yes councillor Madden. Do I have a seconder? Councillor Martin. Is there any discussion? Did you wish to raise your, while we're in discussion?
Yes. Happy to do so. It's important that, even though I've sent emails to all of the councillors and the CEO advising them of the motion, it's important that I obviously read the motion out, the proposed motion. Now, Chair, this would be, this would be recommendation C, so I'm fine with A and B. And recommendation C would be that within six months council replace all of the brown signs in division, that within six months council replace all of the brown signs in division one and four with set A style signs. So in other words, I'm sure you're aware of this, of course you're well travelled in Ipswich, Chair. We have the unusual situation that in the old division 10, they had different
Point of order Chair, we need a seconder before that.
Oh, okay, before discussion, yeah, sorry. You're the initial mover.
Yep.
So you're moving again the amendment.
Yep.
Do we have a seconder to the amendment?
Second to the original.
And the original seconder has agreed? We're happy to progress to discussion?
Well, if, if the mover and seconder agrees, that, that becomes part of the motion.
Part of the, okay. So you wish to, do you wish to speak to the motion as a whole, but all A, B and C?
I'm just reading, because it's self explanatory, I'm just reading whether the words up there are what I'm proposing. Within six months, council replace all of brown signs in division one with style A. Set A style signs, yep, that's what I'm proposing. I think for those that aren't familiar with brown signs, Chair, at some point I think I should explain why myself and councillor Martin are seeking to have these signs replaced with the standard signs.
Will you have the floor councillor Madden?
Good, good. I think the kindest way to talk about these brown signs is that there was a time in Ipswich where it was decided that one of the previous 10 divisions had different town and suburb signs from the rest of Ipswich. I know it sounds extraordinary, but that's how it is. Those brown signs are in various states of repair. Some of them need replacing right now, some might be able to continue. The way it would work with this motion, just to explain to councillors that may have some signs in their area that need replacing, nothing will happen to a sign until either a council officer or a councillor requests that a sign be replaced. And it will only be replaced if it's worn out. Councillor Martin and myself want the brown signs replaced now in block. We're only talking about eight, maybe 10 signs, it's not a lot of signs. And we'd like those replaced now without the necessity of us lodging individual service requests to replace individual signs, Chair. That's the best way I can explain it.
I do have some questions, but the seconder wish to speak to it?
No, I concur with councillor Madden that a lot of the brown signs are nearly eligible anyway, so they probably beyond repair. Also just like to, just as an aside, I just think it's a shame that Goodner is using the stall guide because I think we all remember when councillor Madden brought it up, it was his rendition of Wukaraka. I think we all remember that, the Kukaburra. Have you forgotten already? Yeah, but I can't do it as good as you, remember?
That's been very riveting, that discussion.
Wukaraka, Wukaraka, he was mimicking the Kukaburra, you forgot.
It was a, it was, if I, if I remember correctly, it was a forgettable moment. I do note, I do note councillor Martin, is that all you wish to valuably contribute? Thank you. I do note division one is, is recognised in recommendation C. If with indulgence of the committee, I'm happy to seek some input from one of the councillor, one of the representatives here in councillor Augustine. Did you wish to add anything?
Oh no, I, yeah, support councillor Madden in his approach to this, thank you.
Very good. Is there any further discussion? Yes councillor Tully?
Yes Chair, I'm supportive of this, I think it retains the white on green standard signs that we've had. Little bit of the history, was that after the amalgamation in 1995, the divisional councillor for particularly that area was keen to, I don't think they ever got over the amalgamation with Mortonshire and wanted a distinctive signage, the brown signs. I think it might have been a yellowish tinge to the, to the wording. But I guess the time has come for the city to have standardised signs like street signs that we have as well across the city. And, you know, I think what we've come up with, including that provision to have those changed. Could I just clarify please, how many signs would need to be replaced within that six month period?
I understand that councillor Madden mentioned about eight, but I wouldn't mind clarification and I do have a question in relation to that myself.
Chair, most towns in the western corridor have two signs. So we're talking about the signs for Carabin, Walloon, Notthaguna, Rosewood, Marburg and Granchester.
So could I clarify, do the other suburbs of division four, Calvert, Hidden Vale, Thaguna, Talagala and the like, do they have the green signs, do they?
They don't have any signs.
They don't have any signs? Okay, so at the moment, do, can I ask the GM for clarification if possible as to whether or not you're aware of any other additional signs outside of the eight that have been nominated? Just for the record, the, the GM has shaken her head.
And said no.
And said no. So just for the record, the, that being the case, I have no further questions. Is there any other discussion on the matter? Your right of reply councillor Madden?
No, I think I've, myself and councillor Martin have contributed enough to the discussions.
Very good. I, in that case I put the motion, all those in favour. Against, it's carried unanimous. Item two is response to petition enforcing stricter penalties for uncontrolled and threatening dogs in the River View area. Is there any questions in relation to this report? I note that the recommendation is to receive a note, the report. However, I do have some questions and I note that the, the GM, the relevant GM is with us here at the front, in Mr Davy. Is there any questions to be put to Mr Davy? I just, with your indulgence, just a question, what do we do in responding to the petitioner in relation to this matter then? If it is just to receive a note?
We should provide written response to the principal petitioner outlining the, the content of the report.
I must admit in relation to community awareness campaigns, I do have some further questions. Do we have any agreement with any other agencies, particularly with the AWL who, who run our pound facilities to assist in community campaigns?
We can pursue that, not to my knowledge, in terms of specific campaigns dealing with the content of the report, but we can consider how we would leverage other relationships to do that.
Just, are there any, any further community awareness campaigns? This is item five, or I say point five of the, of the petition, seeking community awareness campaigns. Launch educational campaigns to raise awareness about responsible pet ownership, the importance of proper training, the consequences of failing to control dangerous dogs. That's as per the petition. Is there any, anything planned for forthcoming financial year for community awareness campaigns?
We are working on a improved campaign, I suppose you'd say, in respect to registrations. Because as discussed in, I think, two committees ago, there were some concerns raised about our registration numbers. But aside from that, there isn't anything specific in the budget at this point in time.
Is there any further discussion? Is there, is there any need for us to put a secondary recommendation in that the petitioner be advised accordingly? Is that normally done in relation to petitions? I would have thought that would be the case.
Yeah, it's a requirement, sorry.
It's, it's a requirement and we will, we will do it, but if you'd like to include it for completeness, that's fine.
I'm, yeah, I think it should be complete, I think it should be in the recommendation that the petitioner be advised accordingly.
I agree with that, but when you say accordingly, there's a lot of material in that response which is not directly related, except perhaps in a peripheral way. Could perhaps we use the expression, you know, relevant or an appropriate response? Because accordingly suggests that you're going to reply to everything, but that's, some of it is how we deal with matters and, you know, how they're considered or followed up and other agencies and things like that, so. But I'm supportive of putting that in the recommendation to, you know, to give an appropriate response.
So recommendation A as per the report, the receive a note, and recommendation B that the, the petitioner be advised, what were the words you used councillor Tully?
Provided with an appropriate, an appropriate response. I think that's all we need to say.
It's on the screen now.
If I could just assist, under the council's meeting procedures policy 9.9.3, it says council will respond to the principal petitioner in relation to all petitions.
So you are suggesting it's not needed at all?
It's part of the council's policy, so they have, council has to go back to the petitioner.
That's why I said it's a requirement.
The councillor Doyle mentioned it, it's a requirement, so I think we're
Have we moved in second and?
No, yeah, I just, I've raised it, I've raised it just as a suggestion at this point in time.
Happy to speak to it when we get to that point, noting I don't have any questions for the general manager though.
If I say Chair that recommendation B is null and void, it's already a part of our procedure.
Well, it's not necessarily null and void, but you're suggesting it's superfluous, is that correct?
Superfluous.
Well, that being the case, and I shan't move the motion, I shan't move that recommendation B, and if there's no further discussion.
I have discussion once
We have discussion, once it's been moved in second.
Yes, I'm sorry, if there's no further questions, my apologies. I will move the motion as it stands, that the report be received and the content noted. And the second is councillor Doyle. Is there, as the mover, I'll just speak briefly to it. I just want to commend the petitioner for approaching council in relation to this. Obviously the matter of animal control and particularly dangerous dogs is of great concern to everyone in the community. And as some may or may not be aware, the state government introduced stricter and stronger laws within the last 18 months in relation to the control of animals, control of dangerous dogs. And I see that for the most part, the petitioner's concerns are addressed through that legislation. Further, I do, again, I commend the fact that most of her suggestions are, as I said, covered either in our local laws or, or the requirements within the act. So, but there is, as the report highlights, an intention to double our efforts in relation to ensuring compliance of registration, which will afford us a greater understanding of the number of dogs in our community and where our energies need to be in relation to servicing those, servicing those areas. So I now ask the seconder if she wishes to add anything in relation to the matter?
Thank you Chair, I concur with your commentary thus far. Obviously we're very well aware of, and I'm sure this applies to every division across Ipswich, certain suburbs that become a little bit more problematic than, than others. And certainly River View, we do receive correspondence and, and concerns expressed by residents fairly frequently around roaming dogs and, and dangerous dogs. Want to thank the petitioner for putting this forward. Also would like to thank the organisation for a very comprehensive response. Just want to note, the, you know, report mentions obviously council's role is to enforce the legislation. When I think about enforcement and what that translates to, that's having adequate council officers on the ground enforcing, enforcing this. So I guess something for us all to turn our mind to during budget discussions and have that dialogue with the organisation to ensure it's appropriately resourced in this particular area and other areas, just to meet our community's expectations that it will be monitored and enforced, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, May Harding?
Thank you Chair, I'd like to thank Ms Bridget Cezonias for submitting this petition over concerns about uncontrolled and threatening dogs in River View. Residents should be able to enjoy their neighbourhood without the worry of having their dog, themselves or their children attacked by someone's dog. Ipswich City Council takes an incident that causes fear to a person or other animal seriously and the animal management officers regularly participate in community events to promote responsible pet ownership and develop community education programmes. While we take the petitioner's concerns very seriously, it must be said that many of the steps requested, our actions council cannot take as a local government because we are not the regulators. The Queensland State Government is the lead agency for the regulation of cats and dogs. Dog ownership is regulated by the Animal Management Cats and Dogs Act of 2008, which is administered by the Queensland State Government's Department of Priming Industries. Dog regulations have been strengthened and we do hope to see less dog attacks in our community as a result. So I'd like to thank Ms Cezonias for bringing this to our attention, bringing this petition to council for our attention so we can continue to look at more what could be done. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, no further discussion? Just as the mover, just wish to reiterate and what the other councillors said in relation to this. Having had involvement of over 14 years now of being Chair for the area that looks after animal management, it is an area of great concern to me. But also further, I think one of the things I've always believed in is educate before regulate. And item five, which has been highlighted by the petitioner, community awareness campaigns, I must admit, I would like to see a greater strengthening in that area for us to then go out and undertake the proper regulation of the existing legislation, Animal Act. So if the general manager can take that on board, that I do believe we need to strengthen our community awareness campaigns to ensure that the community is well educated, well informed and can take the appropriate steps to be compliant. If there's no further discussion, I put the matter to the vote, which is that the report be received and noted, all those in favour. Against, it's carried unanimous. Item three is the minutes of the meeting, I tape, they're tabled and I take them as being read. Is there any, there is a mover to that, but before I ask for the mover, is there, is there anything within the minutes that needs to be amended or corrected? There being none, I'll take your move to move the report, councillor Doyle. Is there a second up? Councillor Martin, any discussion? All those in favour? Against, that's carried unanimous. Item four relates to a heritage project at the Ipswich General Cemetery. The report is in relation to a project. The recommendation says it's in relation to the project. To be considered by council and the content of the proposed information signage for the project, as per the attachments, be approved by council. Is there any questions in relation to the matter? Yes, Mayor Harding.
I just have a point of order of declaration of interest in that, which I think I should make before there's any discussion.
Councillor Tully.
It's just a precautionary declaration that in accordance with section 150 EF of the Local Government Act 2009, I, councillor Tully, form the meeting that I have a personal interest in item four titled Ipswich General Cemetery Heritage Project. The nature of the interest is that I am a state government appointed trustee of the Goodness Cemetery Trust. It's a declaration I've made previously. I don't receive any benefit, financial or otherwise, in relation to that position, but it is a cemetery within the city of Ipswich. And just as a precaution, I make that declaration and put it to the committee as to whether or not I can be involved in the consideration and vote of the matter.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Can I ask you a couple of questions just in relation to your declaration? Is your appointment or your role voluntary in nature or is it paid in nature?
It's fully voluntary.
Thank you. Is there any benefits in relation to your role there that would see this, that you see this as being a conflict personally?
No, not at all. As I say, it's a precautionary declaration because it is an active operational cemetery. And so is the Ipswich General Cemetery to some extent. So I'm just making that as a declaration.
Is there any other questions of councillor Tully? There being no further questions, I'd like to move that the councillor has no conflict of interest in this matter and that he can vote in the public interest. Do I have a second up? Councillor Doyle?
I may have a declarable conflict.
Oh, before I come to you, councillor Madden. That was moved by councillor Doyle, is there a second up? Councillor Johnick, I put the matter to the vote. All those in favour? Against, that's carried. And I note, I note that councillor Tully, you did not intend to vote. You are. Yes, I note that, I saw that. So that is move unanimous with the exclusion of councillor Tully.
Can that just be clear that I didn't vote in relation to that matter?
Is that noted?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Madden.
This is just a precautionary thing that I need to do, Chair. One of my relatives was buried in one of those graves. So I don't remember the name, but we do have a photograph of the grave, but I thought I'd better do the declarable conflict. In accordance with section 150 EF of the Local Government Act 2009, I, councillor James Madden, inform the meeting that I have a personal interest in item four titled Ipswich General Cemetery Heritage Project. The nature of the personal interest is I have a distant relative that was one of the graves that was removed. And I should add that we do actually have a photograph of the grave, fortunately. And that's my declarable conflict of interest. I obviously have no benefit financially, other than family research in this project, but just need to declare it and I hope I'm allowed to stay and discuss the matter.
Have you shared your photo and information with the relevant officer?
I'm happy to do so, just got to find it.
Very good. I note that he is present, should there be questions? So, very good.
It's in the Roman Catholic section, Chair.
No doubt. Does anyone have any questions of councillor Madden's precautionary declaration?
Except that there's no such thing as precautionary declaration, just to be real clear.
Yes, yeah.
Just on that, I think the word precautionary, which I've used, is just to indicate that it's being made as a precaution, not that there's a definition of what that precaution is under the Act. But it is a full declaration, a full declaration which requires a decision of council.
Just to say that the Local Government Act, there are two types of conflict of interest. So is it declarable or prescribed? Thank you.
As gray as they are in many respects, in my opinion. The, is there any questions of councillor Madden's declaration? None? I'd like to move that councillor Madden not have a conflict in relation to this matter and he can be involved in the discussion and the vote in accordance with the Act and obviously for the benefit of the community. And that is seconded by councillor Martin. Okay, is there any questions in relation to this report? I do believe you raised your hand, Mayor Harding.
No, I think should we be voting on the...
Oh, yes, if there's, sorry, my apologies. All those in favour? Against, that's carried unanimous. The councillor Madden did not take part in that vote. Mayor Harding, did you have questions?
Yes, I do, thank you, Chair.
Shall I ask the relevant officer to come forward?
Yeah, I'm not sure who it would be. So if I ask the question, then no, if it's Mr Davy or not, is it okay, Chair? And look at the attachments, I think, is it three through to eight? When I look at the different signs. May I ask why the first sign at attachment three is a different colour and design to the rest? I know we've just had a, I know some motion go through with differences in signs, so I just would like to be, understand why there is a difference in the colour and style. The style seems to be similar, just the colours are different.
My colleague Ben Pole has approached to address that question.
Approach the bench.
Thank you, Chair.
Take the oath. Mr Pole, do you need the question repeated?
I've got that, thank you. Chair, Mayor, councillor's Ben Pole, general manager, community cultural and economic development. Within the 2020 style guide and 2022 signage manual, there's kind of a colour palette or a set, a family set. The first one that you're looking at is the indigenous format and the subsequent are historical or heritage formats. So each carries a slightly different colour palette and you'll even notice with the indigenous, a slightly different design for the sign. But yeah, they were part of the adopted style guide and signage manual.
Could I ask, is it adopted by council or adopted by, just under delegation by council officers? Because I was not aware of a difference.
Yeah, I would have to, I'll take that on notice, Mayor.
Thank you.
I think the style guide's come up quite a bit lately and I think maybe that if I can recommend to the CEO, maybe it's a discussion for a workshop or briefing session perhaps as well.
Thank you, Mr Pole.
So we don't keep the need to continue to ask the questions in relation to it?
Certainly share some further information in terms of when it was adopted and who was the delegated authority, certainly. Thank you.
Through the chair, we might circulate those documents as well for fullness so that...
That might be a good idea, yes, thank you.
And follow that up with how the approvals were done at that time.
Very good. Any further questions, Mayor? Could I just ask, while we're talking about the format, there seems, there appears to be a similarity in the colour of the bottom line, the bold line at the bottom of the other signs and the majority of the indigenous sign. Is that the same colour? Are you aware or you're not?
I'd have to take that on notice. I would suggest, yes, the objective is to maintain a level of consistency through the entire suite. So colours are duplicated across the suite. The green, for example, is duplicated regularly, yeah.
Yeah. So, very good. No, no, I'm satisfied with that. Is there any, is there any concerns, Mayor, in relation to whether the sign should be approved today? And that...
I am, especially...
In relation to your question?
Probably not. I can raise it during discussion.
Okay, because we do have a week between now and obviously the council meeting, or well, 10 days. So maybe that's something that could be satisfied between now and then if need be.
I don't have any other questions for Mr Pole, thank you.
Thank you. Any other further questions of Mr Pole? Yes, councillor Madden?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Pole. I'm looking at page 34 of attachment A, which sort of outlines what is proposed. And I think it's a benefit to councillors and people in the gallery that they be made aware that the headstones won't be put back into the spots they occupied. They'll be put as a ring around a garden area and I guess proximate, as proximate as possible to where the grave was. And I've got no objections to that. I'm just wondering, say for example, in my case, where I have a relative and the headstone's completely disappeared, will family members be given the opportunity to have replacement headstones? Where we have a photograph of the headstone?
That's probably a question for either Alicia or Graham. And whilst they approach, if that's okay, I might just outline, for some of the history, the headstones were displaced. Graham, you can approach as well if you like. The headstones were relocated into one corner of the cemetery. There was a range of, say, destructive activities occurred at that time in the 70s and record keeping is not great from that era. So if we wanted to, we couldn't even reinstate the headstones in their proper place. So that's the principle behind the memorial gardens concept.
Good morning, Graham Schultz, I'm the principal officer with projects for the compliance branch. There is no, in regards to your question, there's no intent to allow additional headstones to be placed with the memorial set out. The intent is to just relocate those headstones that were moved in the 70s back to their denominational areas. Because that's the closest that we could, you know, like identify for their existing, for their previous locations. If we were to open it up for all new headstones, that obviously, that could be endless because there's about four and a half thousand burials in that area. So it's quite a number that you could have people coming forward or different families feeling, you know, wanting to do all sorts of different memorials and that type of thing.
Well, that's a shame, but if that's the rules.
Mr Schultz, was the question discussed? And I note that there's been a community forum or a community committee, I guess, or work group in relation to this. Has this been raised? Even the option of any form of recognition of previous burials on the site?
There has been discussions about allowing memorial plaques along the walkways, which would be the nodes as you come into the area. Potentially, you know, if someone can identify that they have got a family member that's been buried in that section, that they could put a memorial plaque there. That would allow for some, you know, recognition, you know, for the family person. And that was through the community consultation and other avenues, we've discussed those things.
I wish you'd mentioned that when I asked you the question, but thanks.
No worries. I thought the question was specifically around putting a headstone in there.
I think you might have volunteered some information there, but anyway.
Yeah, no, well, it's, well, it's tended, I mean, it's good to know that there is some provision. Are you satisfied with that, councillor Madden?
Yeah, I appreciate you asking the question, Chair. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Is there any other questions for Mr Schultz or Mr Pole while they're here? If they're not, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate your assistance. One question I do have, and I believe that this is more for the general manager. When are we looking to commence any of this works? Is there, is there any discussion in relation to it? Because obviously, there is quite a deal of works associated with this.
Yes, there is quite a deal of work associated with this project. We have this in budget forecasts from 2027 onwards. So that really comes down to how much we are willing to invest. And there's some complexity with the project as well. So it will likely extend over several financial years.
Very good.
For the Chair, Mr Davy, I've attended some of the Ipswich Heritage Network Group meetings and this has been a matter that's been discussed, but I can see it's not listed in the community and other consultation part of the report. May I ask if that could be looked at?
Yes, Mayor, we could actually add that into the report for the council discussion because there has been discussion with that network group regarding this project.
And they'd be very supportive of it, from me.
Thank you. Any further questions in relation to that matter? Very good. So whilst we have the report here and the signage approval coming forward, is there any need to, in relation to this, Mayor, from your concerns regarding the indigenous signage, is there any need to...
Once it's moved and seconded, I can discuss it in discussion, if that's okay.
All right, if there's no further questions, I will move the report, move the recommendation, which, I'll just go to the front of the report. It's basically that the report regarding the Ipswich General Cemetery Heritage Project be considered by council. The content of the proposed information signage for the project, as provided in attachments three to eight, be approved by council. Do I have a mover? Councillor Doyle, do I have a second up? Councillor Madden? Discussion? The mover, I'll go to the mover first, councillor Doyle, do you wish to speak? Any discussion? Do you reserve your right? Very good, all right. To the second.
Sorry, out of respect for councillor Madden, happy for him to lead the discussion.
Chair, I just wanted to explain one thing about the reason why I have a photograph of a grave is that we're talking about burials that were made soon after Ipswich was settled, in the early history of Ipswich. And obviously, there was lots of letters written between my relatives and their relatives in Ireland. And it was a common practice, when there was a funeral, to send a photograph of the grave. I guess it was sent probably, you know, maybe a year after, back to the home country in Ireland. So people that are familiar with family history of that era, are familiar with seeing pictures of graves. So I wasn't involved in the community consultation and I don't know if it's something that younger council officers were aware of. But I'm sure the Ipswich Genealogical Society would have many pictures of graves because they are very good at collecting data. And certainly, I've got a photograph of my relative's grave. It is disappointing that, given I've got a photograph of a headstone that for whatever reasons was destroyed, that it's not possible for me to have a replacement headstone. But clearly, from the attitude of the council officer, I've got no say in that. It's already been decided that there's thousands, the words used were, there's thousands of people.
Chair, could I call in please disrespect for the council officer?
Perhaps I could word it this way, Chair. From the information provided by the council officer, it seems that it's already been decided and it's been considered, the possibility of the thousands of people that are buried in this area are not going to be given the opportunity of a replacement headstone. That's already been, seems to have already been decided in a very affirmative way. And I'm disappointed by that. I don't think we're going to be flooded by people wanting to pay thousands of dollars to replace a headstone where they have a photograph of the headstone. But in saying that, I know my family would probably be okay with a plaque. But it is disappointing that council has taken the position that they're not going to allow families to have replacement headstones. Chair?
Yeah.
Councillor Doyle?
Yeah, thank you, councillor Madden. I understand your commentary, absolutely. Just wondering, Chair, what, and perhaps the CEO or general manager can add some commentary here on the path forward. I would suggest we need to go away and discuss this particular report a little further. The mayor's already added she would like to see the Heritage Network consultation work outlined in the report. I think a briefing session potentially about historical discussions and consultation. I'm just, yeah, I think we need to revisit this one, so wondering what that might look like.
Yeah, I might just go to the mayor with her concerns now, if I might. Maybe there is, maybe this council's not ready for the report at the moment. Maybe it should be referred back for further consultation with councillors and... Maybe it should be referred back for further, uh, consultation with councillors and through the briefing process. Mayor Harding.
Chair, my, my discussion points were around the, I guess, the signage itself. We've just had some discussion, I mean, we have the, the burgundy and that burnt yellow sort of colour. When we've just had a big discussion about green and other colours. So I just wouldn't mind councillors being involved, um, in those discussions. Um, and I would like to note that the Ipswich, um, Heritage Network Group have had a number of, um, sessions where they've had, this has been consulted with them, um, with Mr. Schultz as well. And he's, they've been very good at explaining and that they've been very happy with the approach. Um, there'll be many people here, including myself, who have relatives who are, uh, were, were buried at the Ipswich, uh, General Cemetery as well. So, and I do note that the, um, there was public consultation done on that as well, where the community were open to put their viewpoints on. So, but I do say there were some contentious issues here. Maybe it is something that we workshop.
Um.
Um, Chair.
Yeah, as the mayor's highlighted, there's been a number of steps undertaken. But I'm also conscious that this has occurred over, you know, a decent amount of time, a few, few years. I think my mind goes back to an original briefing last term. So I'm just suggesting potentially we hit pause for a very short time. So everyone can get up to speed and we can have a chat about the way forward. That is all.
Yeah, I do note that mo, the majority of this work seems to have been done prior to, um, this term.
Yeah.
And, uh, therefore, um, the input of current councillors has not been, or the new councillors has not perhaps been considered. Um, so maybe we do need to, we do, I note that we have moved the motions. So, um, what's the process by here if we wish to, to, um, um, take the report from the agenda? Remove it from the agenda for a future meeting, pending further discussions?
I think you just can add another resolution, that it be referred as you wish.
So do we, the motion has been put, do we need to vote down that motion before we do that? Or do we, I know we haven't voted, but the motion has been put.
Yeah, but, uh, you, you, if, if I could just offer this, that at any point, even if a motion's been moved, we're going to have a procedural motion to defer it for consideration at the next meeting or a subsequent meeting.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Yeah, I don't think.
That was the advice I was looking for.
Yeah, even though it's a valid motion before the council, we can, we can defer further consideration, uh, before the committee.
A procedural motion? Would you like to move that procedural motion, councillor Tully?
Well, could I ask, um, what, what did you want?
Yeah, um, I'm happy to do that. Sorry, I deferred to you, Chair, because I thought, um, but out of respect for your position and the CEO, that you may have a preferred way forward. However, happy to offer, um, that the recommendation, I guess, be amended.
Well, I'm, I'm, I would prefer the matter be deferred, owing to the questions, um, that have been raised. So, I mean, uh, if it had have been just the, the matter of the, the colour, um, scheme, the, um, the style guide, I was happy for us to proceed to the next meeting to get clarification. Uh, not the next meeting, sorry, the council meeting, the ordinary council meeting for the clarification during that time. But, um, outside of that, I think there seems to be some other general concerns about the report and about the project.
I, I, I agree with that.
And I believe we should defer it.
Um, I'm sure we will all be very proactive, um.
I think that particularly owing to the fact, sorry, councillor Doyle, that we've got two short weeks.
Sure.
Yeah, it might be best for it to be held over to the next meeting. Um, so what is the appropriate procedural motion? Is there one that? That the, uh, report be referred to a future meeting for, for the next meeting, for the May meeting, for consideration?
I think that possibly is too soon.
A future meeting, fair enough, just in case, yeah.
The briefing sessions are very full.
Oh, very good, yeah, owing to them.
Yep.
All right, that the report be referred to a future meeting for consideration? All those, uh, being a procedural motion, I don't believe that needs a second, uh, um, correct?
I haven't got my standing orders here.
Sorry?
There's eleven motions that don't need a second, but I'm not sure of that one.
Okay, well, I'll ask for a second, just for the safe side. Councillor Johnick, thank you. And, um, all those in favour, that's carried unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for the officers. We'll, um, um, address this in the coming month or two. Uh, item five, uh, exercise of delegations, um, um, by the development planner, uh, de- development planning, sorry? Uh, the recommendation is that the report be received and noted, noting that it does include all of the determined, um, development applications for the period of twenty five, February through to the seventh of April. Any questions? There being no questions, the motion is, and I put the motion, um, that the report be received and noted. Is there a second, uh, councillor Madden? Any discussion? There being no discussion, I, I put it to the vote, all those in favour? Sorry, councillor Doyle? Sorry, I didn't see your hand. No, I wasn't sure what. Fair enough. So you are, so I'll raise it, hands again, all those in favour? Uh, that is unanimous, thank you. Uh, item six, Planning Environment Court Action Status Report. Again, it's a receive and note, noting that it relates to court matters. Um, questions either have to be carefully, um, considered or the meeting closed. Are there any questions in relation to the report or content? There being no questions, uh, the recommendation is the receiving and noting of the report. I move that motion. Um, do I have a second, uh, councillor Johnick, thank you, deputy mayor? And discussion? There being no discussion, put the matter to the vote, all those in favour? Against, that's carried unanimous. Item seven, Infrastructure Strategy and Planning Manager. I call up the new gen, thank you, Mr. Davy, for your assistance this morning. And I welcome, um, General Manager, Ms. Mackenzie. While the general manager is getting herself ready, is there any questions in relation to item seven? To the report? I note that it is a provisional projects approval. Uh, both of those are within division two. Are there any questions, particularly of the division two councillors present? None?
But, oh, I'd just like to ask the size of the tree, you know?
What a mature tree looks like.
Yeah, like how big is it?
Four hundred litres.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw that, what's that mean in English?
That's a tub. Four hundred litre tub.
That's the size of the tub.
Can I just, had, not, just to put that into perspective, the councillor Johnick had eyed originally. It's over a playground section, which is very popular with the young ones. And it was a community request, uh, to have a shade sale there. And the quote we got was eighty thousand dollars for, um, a shade sale over that, which was sufficient to ensure that it wouldn't, uh, couldn't be brought down in strong winds. So even though, um, and we queried the, uh, cost of that, um, the, for the, um, for the, um, mature tree. But it, it, it's in line with the row of, um, fig trees immediately adjacent to it. So, um, it's saving seventy thousand dollars to do it that way.
Thank you. Um, councillor Madden?
I, I was gonna ask what the, um, genus and species of the tree is, um, or in common language?
Are you going all Don Burke on it, are you?
I'm hoping you're not going to say it's Ficus macrocarpa.
Well.
Oh, I was certainly not going to say that.
But I believe it's a Morton Bay fig. And I think the other ones in the row on that western sector of the park are Morton Bay figs.
Oh, very good. Lovely tree.
It's better than Ficus microcarpa. They're the ones on, um, along the river.
I was thinking exactly the same thing, councillor Madden.
Yes, although the one at the round, councillor, the one at the roundabout is a Morton. The one at the roundabout that recently collapsed is a Morton Bay fig.
And just remind me, what is, um, the genus and species of, of the Morton Bay?
The ones that you, well, they're Ficus macrocarpa. And the ones that you and I have, uh, concerns about, uh, Ficus microcarpa, a small leaf fig tree. Macro means small, carpa means leaf, uh, small leaf.
You know your Latin as well as I do, thank you. Um, so, um, is it capyotempore? By beware. Okay, um, is there any further questions? Before I'm? Yes, it, it's. No.
More, I said Morton Bay fig.
Which is a big leaf fig.
As, as I recall, but councillor Johnick was in the same meeting.
I concur with councillor Tully.
Thank you.
On the genetics of the tree, and I would like to move this one as well, if I could, thank you.
Okay, uh, so the recommendation is moved, uh, as per the report. And seconded, obviously, by councillor Tully.
I'll second it, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Uh, discussion?
Um.
Um, the mover?
Thank you.
Councillor Johnick?
Obviously, I'm excited as a division two councillor. And, um, councillor Tully has, um, updated the council on the requirements for the tree, which is a great solution to add sale to a really popular, um, playground in the Evan Marginson Park in Goodna. Um, and then the second, um, provisional project around Langley Park on Bruce Lane and Langley Road in Camera as well. It's an, an older local park, um, but there's a lot of families that are moving into the, the area, into Camera. So it's really busy now. Um, that, that whole kind of thoroughfare there and the shops and everything is getting busier and busier. So whenever we visit, we always see, um, a family there. And it's a, it's a gorgeous little kind of green park with a lot of mature trees around it. Um, but it just needs a little bit of beautification and a bit more, um, planning and some erosion, um, work. So I'm really, um, excited to see what this will look like after the works are, are done, um, for the community. It's been on our agenda for a few, a few years now, this one, so.
Very good.
Um, thank you.
Councillor Tully?
Yeah, I'll just be brief with this, ju- just in relation to those, uh, the, um, the fig tree in, uh, Evan Marginson Park. Thank, uh, councillor Madden for his, um, interest and, um, Matt, sorry. Um, perhaps you, you could, um, um, have a workshop one day and tell us about all the ficus trees and which ones we should or shouldn't have, um, in the city. Um, I concur with, um, councillor Johnick, um, in relation to Langley Park. Those mature trees there have prevented, uh, grass from growing. You know, they're very, very shady next to that, uh, commercial, um, area across the road. So this is to, uh, beautify it and actually make it safer because, uh, the grass is, uh, uh, very patchy, um, at that location. But it's a, uh, very highly used, uh, area of Camera. And we're happy if this, uh, goes through today and, uh, next week to have this work done.
Thank you. Uh, any further, oh, sorry, um, CEO?
Chair, it pains me to do, to do so, and I may get a lesson in horticulture. But I just noticed that in the attachment, it describes the tree as a Ficus benjaminina? In attachment one to item seven?
Very good, yes, it does.
And when I Google that, it, it, it's not the Morton Bay fig?
It's a microcarpa. It is a microcarpa.
The mi, the, it, I, if, if Google, if we, if Google, if Google is correct, which it is not always. So as I said, I'm happy to be corrected, Ficus macrophylla is, is the, is the Morton Bay fig? So just.
It is a fig, it is Ficus, it is Ficus, yes.
It is a Ficus, that, that we can confirm. But just, yeah, just noting that the report says it's a Ficus benjaminina, a weeping fig, Benjamin fig or Ficus tree. Longevity living between twenty to fifty years. So broadleaf evergreen tree that grows to fifty feet tall.
Any great concern, councillor Tully?
I don't think so, but I didn't come here today to learn about Ficus.
You're not, um, you're not crying over the weeping fig? Very good. All right, well, if there's no further discussion.
Um, but sorry.
Councillor Doyle?
If I may add, um.
Horticulturally speaking?
No, absolutely not. Um, very supportive of this, uh, provisional project. And this again is an issue that comes up, um, right across Ipswich, providing adequate shade to our, um, play areas in, in parks. And it's great to see that, um, a tree, whatever it may be, is a great and, and far cheaper alternative to a shade sale structure. I just want to highlight, um, for, for any residents that, that are watching, that the cost of these shade sales, um, is, is significant. We know that as we replace damaged, uh, ones across Ipswich. And it does have a lot to do with safety as well. They need to be quite high to sh, to stop children scaling them and, and getting on top. So, you know, as I understand it, having gone through one down at Red Bank, uh, the, the costs, um, uh, are large. So it's great to see that a gorgeous fig, um, can be, um, planted. Thank you.
Very good. Any further discussion? Just want to raise the, um, for those who are wondering what provisional projects means, it's a golden opportunity for the community to get involved in their, in their, um, local area, uh, and suggest improvement. In relation to them, and those suggestions can be considered as part of, uh, the provisional projects policy. And I commend, uh, the local councillors for, uh, working with their community to initiate these, uh, improvements. Um, the mover, write a reply?
I'm fine, thank you, Chair.
Uh, then the motion shall be put, all those in favour? Against, that's carried unanimous. Item eight, I believe we're at now. Uh, Public Monuments and Memorials, Assessment of an Application from Springfield Lakes Nature Care Incorporated. Is there any questions in relation to this matter? There being no questions, the recommendation is that the Queen's Jubilee Commemorative Sign is detailed in attachment two of the report be approved by council. Um, is there a mover? Councillor Doyle, is there a second? Councillor Tully, uh, is there any discussion? Councillor Doyle, as the mover? You reserve your right? Um, councillor Tully? Uh, any other discussion? There being no further discussion, uh, the recommendation is put, all those in favour? Against, that's carried unanimous. Item nine, again, a similar, um, application. It's an assessment of an application from the Brisbane, um, Bangla Language School and Ethnic School Association for a monument and memorial. Um, is there any questions in relation to this matter? Uh, there seems to be some questions. I'll, um, pose the questions. I, I'll come to you, Mayor, first, if I may.
Yep, my questions might be surprising, like to the CEO, I've had them, I think, since twenty twenty one. But just looking at the fact that I think that this group received funding before they actually had approval for the monument. So I'm not sure which area, I'm just after clarification from the organisation as to the proper process for a monument. Would you get approval for the monument first? Do you get funding first? Or what's the? Because we have a situation here with this particular one where council gave funding before there was actually an approval for a monument to be built.
Sorry, can you, uh, who obtained funding?
So this particular group obtained funding from one part of council without getting permission from another part of council for the monument to be built.
Okay, very good.
So I'm not.
Um, there is a, well, the officer concerned is coming forward. Um, you also had a question, deputy mayor, what's, does your question relate to?
Um, it was in relation, um, to the costs to council for this. Um, and then any, I guess, community, um, engagement that has occurred in support of this.
Consultation?
Yeah.
Very good. Uh, yes, um, I welcome Mr. Delio. Um, yes, do you need the initial question or the secondary question re-asked?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Tony Delio, Managing Infrastructure Strategy. Um, if you wouldn't mind repeating the question, because.
Yes.
At the back of the room.
Um, obviously, what is the normal process for someone wanting to build a monument in Ipswich? And has that process been followed here?
Yes, um, there's a, there's a policy that covers, um, the monuments and memorials. Um, in this case, there was a two-stage, uh, uh, stages to the, to the, um, to think. The first stage, uh, came through and council agreed to that, I think it was in February. The first stage, uh, came through and council agreed to that, I think it was in February twenty twenty one, progressed through to stage two, uh, and, um, stage two has been followed now with respect to this.
For the stage one, you're saying council, so that was delegated by a council officer? Stage one, you said in twenty twenty one was approved?
Yes, by council.
By council?
Correct.
Was that just for the funding or for the monument?
That was to allow the project to proceed to stage two, which then, um, considered, uh, the, the broader, um, questions and the funding considerations.
Yep.
If, if I may, just when you say by council, you mean by resolution of council?
Correct.
Right.
Yep. Um, if I may, Chair, um, I think back when council gave a, a grant of ten, I guess, what, how much is money is being proposed by council? Because I, I've got information here that we've given fifteen thousand dollars plus, is it an additional ten thousand for a footpath, is that twenty five thousand? What's the, what's being proposed here?
So the, the total cost of the project has been estimated at seventy. Um, and the, uh, the footpath, um, uh, council, um, is contributing the ten thousand.
Yep.
And the remaining sixty thousand will be by the applicant.
Thank you. Um, my other question about the monument itself, and I've asked this a few times. Um, I've seen a, a mock-up of it and I, I do, I, I'm in support, in principal support for this monument. I just to think that the way it's displayed, it's not as clear as it could be. I have seen other mother language monuments which are clearer to explain what it is. Um, has council given any advice to this group to, to assist them with that? Or do we just take on what they say and we don't give them feedback, what's been the process?
Because it's a, a little bit unusual, mayor. Um, the, the process has been, we've gone through a request, um, uh, process, um, to understand for something similar to what's shown in the report, what the costing would be. Obviously, the detail of that hasn't been finalised now. Um, and there would be a process to, uh, determine exactly the, the detail of what that might look like. But to gain, uh, an appreciation of the estimate, um, essentially what's shown in the report is what, um, we've, we've looked at, but not, not, um, finalising the detail yet.
So at the moment, obviously what we've been shown in the, is a mother language monument and it has some characters of different languages, um, and a, an image and a word that's not in English. Is it Shahid Menor, Minar? As well as another statement in another language? And then it talks about the sacrifice of martyrs. Will that wording come back to council for, for discussion? I think it's really important that it's, that that is, what this is about is really explained to the community, I guess, sort of.
Uh, I would suggest, yes.
Okay, so today we're not, we're not approving, not being asked to approve the, the images that have been given to us yet, is this in principle approval for what, the footpath?
For the footpath and for, uh, a monument up to the order of sixty thousand. But the detail of that would obviously be something that would come back.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delio, thank you, Chair.
Before, um, is there any other questions of councillor, of Mr. Delio? Um, I just have the one. I, um, having read the report, I'm a little unclear as to the, um, the proximity of this memorial with respect to the war memorial that exists in Rebel Domain. Is there, um, can that be explained, uh, exactly where it is? I'm a little unclear. I note we have the, the stage, to the left of the stage, uh, from my recollection is the war memorial. Um, where is this memorial to be cited?
Um, I, I haven't been involved in, um, those discussions, um, directly. Uh, but I understand the officers have spoken, the Division Two councillors, and perhaps the Division Two councillors may be able to, um, provide, um.
Yeah, uh, unless it's changed, um, as you, if you're in the Rebel Domain and you're facing the stage and to the left of the stage, as you face it, is the war memorial.
Immediate left, yep.
Yeah, and then further up, there's a r- large set of steps further beyond that. And it's up, it's basically up the top, um, uh, away from the stage or the war memorial, near the top of the stairs and just over a bit, so.
So is there any concern of its proximity to the, the other memorial, as Mike?
But unless it's changed, but the mayor might have some later information.
I went to the, um, I guess, a, a ceremony this year and with us, so I had a bit of a mock-up of where it would be. And it's positioned where councillor Tully said, so it's at a different gradient, it's off to the left, but also up in a different level. Um, the other thing I did note was the fact that everyone approaching the memorial will ask to take our shoes off. So I do question whether we actually do need to do, have a footpath as well, because apparently it's part of the custom that you remove your shoes when you go to lay a wreath there or, or, or sell flowers.
Can I just add to, thank you, um, just that e- even when that ANZAC memorial, war memorial, went in some years ago, there was an issue about the proximity to the stage. The stage was, and, and it's a pretty tight area if you want to have a function, uh, the functionality of having a, a large number of people there facing, um, either the war memorial, which they'll be doing on, on Friday, or the stage for something else. I thought that, um, and that's another dimension as well about taking your shoes off, like on a, particularly on a footpath associated with it. But I was satisfied, um, that it was sufficiently away from, um, the, the, the stage and, and the, uh, war memorial.
And, and has the RSL been consulted on that? Is there any consultation with the services?
I don't know, I'd have to check with the council. But I didn't feel as though it was a disrespectful proximity. I felt that it was because of the gradient that I felt, I, but that's, I, but, yeah, I'm not a spokesperson for RSL of Queensland.
No, 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 I just would have assumed that that consultation would have been undertaken, but it was a question I wish to raise. Do we know if, um, there have been any approaches made to the state RSL or the local RSL regarding that?
I, I don't believe so, Chair, um, but it would obviously be something that would be taken up as part of the project.
I'm just wondering whether, um, if we are approving the application, um, are we approving it in situ, as in, in the location? Um, or we are just approving a application, a, a memorial? Not at a particular location, I'm not sure. I guess that's what it comes down to. Um, I wouldn't want to be, um, offending any party, remembering that everyone has their, and I'll use the word sacred space, um, because, um, regardless of whether it's a war memorial or whether it's a, uh, any other significant memorial of, of, um, of faith or otherwise, there is a, a degree of sacredness to those spaces. And I would just hope that, um, those sorts of things are considered. Is there any haste in this matter?
Could I suggest, um, we're just still in the question stage, but just to move it forward that, um, in paragraph C, and I'm not moving an amendment now, which we, we don't have a motion before us, but that, the, um, but, but we could add at the end, uh, at a location to be, uh, approved by council. And that would then enable us to have that relevant consideration with the RSL.
Okay. Uh, any further questions of the officer while the officer is? Yeah? No, thank you, Mr. Delio, thank you, appreciate your assistance. Um. Okay, no further questions at all? Uh, the recommendation, um, do we have a mover of the recommendation before we, um, or do you wish to move it with your amendment, councillor Tully?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move the motion as printed, subject to the following change, to change, uh, Springfield to Springfield Central to, um, verify the correct suburb in which it's located. And to add the words, um, at the end of Springfield Central, at a location to be approved by council.
Do we have a second, uh, to?
May, may I ask, and I'm, if, Chair, if I could speak with councillor Tully? Uh, noting the wording on the, on the memorial itself, on the stone itself, uh, it's not clear to me that, that it's going to come back to council for, for approval. Is there somewhere we could add a?
Oh, well, yeah, the purpose of the, um, amendment or the proposal as it is, that's not, actually, it's amendment to the what's been recommended. Paragraph C talks about entering into a legal agreement. And that's the first, uh, legal basis of, of this progressing. So if we put that into the legal agreement, um, um, obviously with the change of suburb name, at a location to be approved by council, if they agree to that, then that, that's, we've got the final say.
Okay, so it'll come back to us?
Yeah, absolutely.
But for resolution?
Thank you.
That's how I read that.
Uh, just one more, um, query in relation to the wording of recommendation C. Is it, is it not ambiguously written that we're going to be funding the whole project from that or?
Can I just respond to that, 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 um, the, the council, uh, is entering into a legal agreement with the, um, organisation's consent? But the basis of the agreement would be, and the wording of the agreement would be what was in the, uh, report.
Report, as per the report.
Thank you.
Okay, the, um, councillor Tully has moved the motion as per the re- the report with the inclusion of the following words at the end of recommendation C, the correction of the suburb to be Springfield Central, and then continue to say at a location to be approved by council. Is that the correct?
Uh, yeah, well, well, it's got there, it has not the words to be there, but, um, oh, it has now, okay.
Sorry, I wasn't sure, did you? Sorry, I thought I wrote it as she said it, my apologies.
Well, that's fine, yeah, that's, either way, it's fine, thank you.
Uh, that is moved by councillor Tully, is there a second before we discuss the matter? Uh, ca- uh, Mayor Harding? Thank you. Um, discussion, I note you had your hand up there, councillor Martin, did you?
Yeah, just asking, does it need council resolution? Rather than just council, does council indicate it could be delegation? So it's okay?
I check capital C means count coming to us as a council.
Any further discussion, uh, mover? Happy with that, thank you. Uh, second, uh, Mayor Harding?
Thank, thank you, Chair. Look, as, as, um, as you see on the Weekend Australian, we had listed that Ipswich City Council is between twenty twenty five and tw- twenty thirty five, the fastest growing council in Australia. And, um, part of that, we, uh, welcome people with, with open arms. And, um, so as Queensland's fastest growing city and in Australia's fastest growing council, uh, we do several, we do welcome and support celebrating people from all different cultures and backgrounds. Ipswich residents come from more than one hundred and sixty countries and speak more than one hundred and fifty-two languages. And this mother language monument Rebel Domain would be used for events like International Mother Language Day and Harmony Week to nurture inclusiveness by bringing people of different cultural backgrounds together. I'm just, I think this will be the first one, be put up by the, um, by the Brisbane Bangla, um, Language School and the Ethnic Schools Association. It'll be the first one in the state. And, uh, just look forward to the, the, um, wording and that all coming back to council for us to get through. So we do get that right and it is in consideration with our community. Thank you, Chair.
Any other discussion? Write a reply, no?
Yeah, I'll close the debate, thank you, and thank you to, to the mayor. And, uh, thank you for the, uh, general questions that have been raised. This is a, a significant decision. There is the issue that's been raised about the, uh, proximity to the, uh, ANZAC War Memorial. And that will need the, uh, discussion to ensure that the legal agreement can be finalized. Uh, but I do support the, uh, fact that we are a broad church in, uh, Ipswich, I use word church in that, uh, general sense. And, uh, this, and, and I can see, um, um, other parts of Rebel Domain being used. It's not, not being, hasn't been established for a whole range of, um, memorials and, um, things of that nature or public monuments. But, um, I don't think this will be the last occasion. There is another, uh, memorial that's been approved on the, um, far side, on the far end away from the, uh, smaller one. Um, that's a, that's a peace pole, um, which is still to be constructed. So I'd thank, um, the mayor and the councillors for supporting this motion.
Thank you, um, I'll put the motion as before us, uh, all those in favour? Against, that's carried unanimous, thank you. Uh, last item, I believe, um, asset infrastructure services department capital delivery report for the month of February. Are there any questions? There being no questions, uh, the recommendation is to receive a note. Uh, do I have a mover? Thank you, Mayor Harding, a second. Uh, deputy mayor, Johnic, uh, any discussion, uh, mayor?
Thank you, Chair. It's good to see the progress being made on the Kerben Channel rehabilitation of Emery Street in Carroll Park, scheduled to be completed in May. Uh, the lighting upgrades at both Kippen Park and Tivoli Ovals have now been completed, allowing for the community to use them at night. Uh, the intersection upgrade at Wukaraka Connection and Kezik Road is progressing with the footings now ready for the poles and mastarms to go up. A mowing truck, a growth program, received an Isuzu truck to add to the fleet to assist council in keeping our many paths and parks maintained. Upgrading of bus stops continue with the stops completed in front of the Springfield Anglican College, Sutton's Park and Blackstone Road. The Possum Creek Parklands upgrade has now also been completed. And I was delighted to join with the Minister for Sport and Racing, the honourable Chief Amanda, and the deputy mayor, councillor Johnic and councillor Tully, um, as well as Ash Barty, uh, and some local children to check out this new playground. The state government provided five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the upgrades to honour former tennis world number one and Ipswich local Ash Barty. The Ash Barty playground was co-designed with three-time Grand Slam singles winner, and she was on hand to officially open the park in March. Um, Ash requested that something be built when she was offered to have a, a statue built in her name. She requested that something be, something be provided to our community and it'll be truly valued and appreciated by local kids. And the playground includes a half court and a rebound wall, complete with a painted-on tennis net, so children can practise like the tennis legend did when she was growing up nearby. Uh, the existing playground was also extended with a dry creek bed and nature play equipment, a looped pathway with stories of each pine tree along the way, new shade sales, seating and greenery, and plants to create a welcoming atmosphere. So it's great to see, so thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, uh, second to councillor Johnic. Wish to? Thank you, I'd just, uh, like to commend to the public, this is a very detailed report. Um, I think it's a report that a lot of people in Ipswich should look at to see the work that council actually does, the progress they make, um, and the number of projects that are ongoing at any given time. And I, um, I, I note particularly in the report, the, um, that works in relation to the Silver Jubilee, uh, park clubhouse are well underway and making good progress, so, um, and I'm actually looking forward to going out there with the divisional councillors to have a look at that, um, how that is progressing. I know that was a project dear to your, dear to your hearts, so, um, uh, and again, I commend the report too, and I know for my, many people I may look at this report and not see it as anything, uh, greatly exciting, but when you, when you do read it from, uh, beginning to end, you do note the amount of work that council does do, um, each month in our city, particularly in relation to our infrastructure. Um, if there's no further discussion, I'll put the, um, the motion to receive a note. Um, do I have a second? Uh, councillor, councillor, sorry. Sorry, we have moved and seconded. Oh, yeah, sorry, my apologies. Um, all those in favour? Against, carried. Uh, go back to the agenda. Any notices of motion? I do not believe there is. Matters arising? None. Uh, any questions or general business? There is none. Um, I, uh, would like to move that the, um, next committee, which I believe is the Finance and Governments Committee, um, commends that, um, how much time would we like? Eleven o'clock? Eleven o'clock? Um, do I have a second? Second to councillor Tully, uh, all those in favour? Against, it's carried unanimous, thank you. Meeting closed, thank you very much for your attendance, everyone.